Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if I might ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Timniak, would you please lead us in the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting from January 6th. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Chris, a second. And then any edits, changes, or discussion. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item up, to here, consider an act upon the following appointment. Human Services Commission, Laura Inserto, unaffiliated, 89 Pine Creek Avenue, for a term 1115 to 1119, to fill a vacancy for Kevin Lennon, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
All right, a second? Chris?
Oh, a second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Inserto, you're here, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good. So she's here for any questions, if you'd like.
I'm all set.
All right. I've known Ms. Inserto for a few years now, and I'm very impressed with her care and concern for seniors. And that's part of her day job, but certainly she's done it after hours, too, and she's been continually involved in this area as long as I've known her. So thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering. Any comments from the public on this appointment? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you. Good luck. All right. Next up, we have our non-recurring items. What I'm going to suggest to my colleagues is that we move all of these at once and second, so we can discuss them as a group together. The resolutions are broken out by the life of the item, but in our schedule for discussion, they won't be done quite in this order. So if we discuss them all at once, then we come back, and then we'll vote on one resolution at a time, if that sounds okay to you.
You're talking about individual projects within that grouping?
Well, we can edit. When we come up to the resolution, any items included in that, we can then edit.
Okay.
As we wish.
Okay.
But if we just get them all in front of us, then we can discuss them as a group.
Okay.
And I think that'll make the backup a little easier to follow.
Okay.
The resolutions, unfortunately, are different sequence than the backups, because the resolutions are based on the life of the item, and our bonding policy says we will not bond something for longer than its useful life. However, the items come before us from departments, and the departments may have a mix of items based on their useful life in there. So we found last year it was a little bit easier to go through doing it that way.
Mm-hmm.
If you're willing to.
Yes.
Give it a shot.
Good.
Okay, so if somebody will move items five, six, and seven?
I'll make the motion.
On a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so those items are now before us for discussion. Let's turn to the item, and why don't we start with Board of Ed. Dr. Tyler, if I could ask your team to present first. I think you've got your items together in a packet here, so we can look at that.
So we're on the capital non-recurring, hard copies of booklet, like this. So the really four items that are sort of typical capital non-recurring type items. We have major issue with the server room in Central Office, which is the main hub of the entire Internet for the entire school system. The air conditioning system is undersized and failing.
Just a moment.
I'm sorry.
If you have this sheet, this will kind of help you keep score.
Yep, got it right there.
I'll just do them briefly, and then we'll just Q and A, maybe, you know, rather than go whole.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right. The Dwight Elementary School has serious issues with the playground retaining wall and stairs. The last of our really old boilers are Fairfield-Ludlow High School, 1971 boilers. This just about finishes off all the boilers. It's very exciting. And the low voltage project for our technology infrastructure is the last in sort of the typical capital non-recurring. And then there's a whole set of security infrastructure. And Chief McNamara is here to talk with us about that. If you have questions, if I remember, this is Phase Two. Last year, we brought forward a proposal for security infrastructure in the amount of about $3.5 million. Knowing that we couldn't get it done in one year, and deciding to try to break up the bonding schedule, the boards in towns, you know, in town decided to give us about half the money for that, and then come back this year for the second half. There've been some changes in that, as we have learned more about exactly what infrastructure we want to harden and what products to use, and so it is a little more than the remaining half, but this is sort of Part Two of the security infrastructure. And I would say while we, obviously, everything we put in here is a public document, there may be some limits as to what exactly we can say about some of the security infrastructure pieces. So those are our five. Four, sort of typical capital non-recurring, and then, of course, the security. Is that enough of an overview, or would you like more detail on any of them?
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Would this pass the Board of Education?
Yes.
Was it unanimous?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, shocking.
Good.
Yes, they were, and so I have some people, if you've got specific questions. Our technology guru is here to talk about the technology projects. Mr. Cullen on the Dwight stairs and playground, and the chief is here on the security. So I feel these are very important items, and I'd love to get your support and move it along to the next level.
The boiler replacement, maximizing that through UI or any available grants which are available for replacement situations?
Tom, come on up. You need a microphone. This is Tom Cullen.
Yes, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations. Yes, we are.
Okay. And what's the percentage offer? What's the rebate we're getting?
We don't know until we apply for it.
Okay.
But all of our boiler jobs, we have been seeing rebates back.
All right, so have we submitted? Do we know what models we're getting and all that yet?
Well, we have an idea what we'd like. We put that into the bid, but when the bids come back, that could change.
Are there certain models which are excluded from the UI grant program?
I don't think so.
Which you might have not gotten?
Not that we've had seen.
Sal's our energy efficiency expert. Sal Murbeau, manager of construction. The UI programs based on, and gas usage, we would be getting gas dollars, as they call them. Depends on the make and model, the efficiency of the unit that we ultimately get. We don't bid one boiler we want. We want a type within certain parameters, functional parameters. We might get model, company A, B, or C, and then the gas company and UI will figure out what our incentive or rebate would be based on the particulars of that model.
All right, so I'm thrilled to hear you're working with UI, and I look forward to hearing that you negotiated hard. Can we go over the Dwight School playground?
Sure.
Sure.
We're here. You got the color one with the pictures, right?
I do. I do. I want to say that I went to Dwight for a little bit. I played in that playground. I think it's one of the playgrounds which, especially the step-up steps, I remember running across as a kid, so.
They haven't been upgraded since.
Right, no, they're definitely in a timely need, and I was recently up there this fall with my three-year-old son at the time, going up and down those steps, and I thought that they were in need of a pair. The washout area, what are we doing as far as drainage goes? Are we actually doing any sort of underground digging to divert the water, or are we just replacing what we have?
No, the underground drainage is already there from the field. It's just that the field to the playground is sloped towards the stairs and down to the school, and the area where the actual stairs entry into the playground is low enough that the woodchips wash down onto the stairs. And in the first, if you notice, those first three stairs are really large wood ones, timbers, with woodchips in them. I think that was the design back then. But they contribute to the washout, and all the woodchips flowing down onto the concrete stairs, and make it very difficult. Also, the retaining wall that goes across, it stopped. If you were walking up the stairs, you'd see on the right-hand side, it stops after about 30 feet, and we find that it's washing down around that and circumventing around that wall and then getting back onto the stairs. So we want to continue that wall.
Will there be a separator between the woodchips and the playground and the steps coming through?
Yes.
So we're not going to have uneven steps?
Yes.
My concern is having a couple kids at kindergarten age, I worry about their balance of stuff coming down the steps.
Yep.
And I don't want to open the town up, so.
No, it's a good point.
That's being thought about and.
Yes.
Worked into? Are there any other plans for the playground?
No, other than long-term, if we ever get to Dwight for renovation, there's no handicap access to that playground because of its location.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the retaining wall at Ludlow?
That's just a picture of one that.
Right.
Of one that was done.
So are we talking the retaining wall at the, where the tennis courts is? There's a larger drop-off? Is that the wall?
No, the retaining wall and stairs is for the Dwight School. What we're showing you is a bad picture of the Dwight location, and then a good picture next to it of something we did recently, of how we'd like it to come out.
This is a before and after picture.
Yes. So the after picture is retaining wall we just fixed at Rodgill Middle School this past summer.
Oh, yeah, I apologize, that's definitely.
It's okay.
We didn't clearly point that out.
Did that fix the drainage over there?
Yes.
Could you talk to us a little bit about the servers, the server room and the upgrades, and what that's accomplishing, and how long?
Yeah.
Nancy.
Sure.
Yep.
This is at 501 Kings Highway, so it's existing to when we moved in, just 2002. And over the years, we've grown. This server room started out in a very, very small room. I want to say maybe seven and a half feet by 15 feet. Within about four or five years, we took a storage room, an IT storage room that's connected to it, and removed all the storage out of it, all the shelving, and tried to increase the server room and make it larger. And we're bursting at the seams. The air conditioning system that was installed for the original server room was a typical, simple, split unit, is what we call it, like you would put in an office or a room, because it was so small. The system keeps failing and breaking and a lot of repairs, even though we have a service agreement, they're coming in seven, eight times a year. And when that room goes down, it's a serious issue, because that's the hub for the whole district. So the right way to do it is to go in there now, engineer the system, take the wall down between the two rooms, put in what's a large Liebert IT server room air conditioning system that's proper for the space, and design it properly. So that's the intent of the project, and Nancy's here if you have any details about the technology side.
You want to add?
Yeah, the challenge in a server room is that the equipment that's in there, even with all of the energy-saving things that we buy nowadays, it puts out a lot of BTUs. So we're constantly trying to compete with that. And because the system was undersized to start with, and because we've continued to add to the racks that we have in there, it puts undue pressure on the system. And it's failed, as Tom said, probably eight or nine times. So we've suffered under the temporary units that are really not appropriate for use in the building facility on a long-term scale to try to augment and support us while parts were found. But it also puts a stress on hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of serving equipment and switches, because they don't like being hotter than basically 75 degrees. So that, what we really want to do is just fix it, so we can get the longevity out of our hardware that we should be getting, and have the reliability we need for the district.
Can you fill us in a little bit about what happens during storms? I know during Storm Sandy, we had some issues in terms of access and availability of the systems that the Board of Ed needed to get things back online with the school district. How does this interplay with that? And can you talk to us a little bit about your sustainability or resilience through those times?
Well, the building itself is in a location that's subject to flooding, and the demarcation, which is the entry point for all services, is actually in that flood plain, which is, anybody's been there, it's in the underground parking area. So basically, if we're underwater, we're underwater. The area's lost power. There's not a whole heck of a lot I can do about the power. But what we've done is built redundant systems. We have third-party organization that will, for example, turn our email on, so we'll fail over to them. And that's what we've tried to do. We've also gone to cloud services for some of what we consider our critical systems. We went cloud service with Munis, those of you that, I think, Mike, you were involved back in the day, when we went through getting that approved. So we have, for what we consider our critical systems for doing business, set up for redundancies if we have another Sandy event.
But right now, there's no alternative power supply, so if power goes out, whether it's a complete flood event or not, then the Board of Ed is out of power, and the current system doesn't work. You'd fail over to those other systems in that case.
Right, so people could get access through the Internet to those systems. But the schools themselves would not be able to get to the services that are functionally served by the main office. But what we've done in our wide-area network design, that contract is renewed, and I'm proud to say that without additional cost to the town, we've negotiated the ability to put in a redundant network at Ludlow High School. We selected Ludlow because it is a shelter, so it would give people access to those services through the shelter as well, so that the schools could connect to Ludlow independent of the King's Highway Office, so that if we wanted the schools to get back in business and the children to be able to do what they need to do without Central Office being live, we could do that.
Okay.
And that'll be going into effect in July.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? I would point out that we're, it's our custom to allow comments as opposed to questions, so, but since there are no comments or questions, we're back to the board. Thank you. Then we should probably go through the other non-recurring items, then we'll come back and use our score sheet to decide which ones we're voting on, if we need to make any changes at that point. So next up is the town. And who would like to kind of lead us in presenting this? Is Mr. Michelangelo here?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to come up and? Oh, all right. We have graphics.
Joe Michelangelo, Director of Public Works for the town of Fairfield. There are four projects on the capital non-recurring request, which are public works related, three strictly public works, and one in conjunction with the Conservation Department. The first request is Fairfield Woods Library Generator for $120,000. Currently Fairfield Woods Library has no permanent generator, so the building is basically out of commission during any power outage. One of the things that we're forced to do is because there are some pretty important servers at the, in the basement of Fairfield Woods Library, and also a sump pump type system. Whenever we get an outage that's going to be more than, you know, an hour or so, we scurry to go up there, and their servers are linked with the main library computer servers. So anytime there's an outage that's going to be more than an hour, we're forced to get a portable-type generator, stick it in the back of a pickup truck, gas it up, run it up there, and basically jump or temporary wire a connection into the, into the circuit board of the, or the breaker board of the library. So, you know, that is probably not the best scenario for the water and the server capabilities. So what this project does is provide full-time, full-power, stand-up, standby Jenner capability, powered by natural gas. We completed a similar one at Old Town Hall. This is pretty much the same size, so that project went good with contractors and the transfer switch, and easily hook it up, so we're confident on that price. I think this is probably about $10,000 more, because that was about two years ago. So that's what the request is for, for that specific request.
Do you want to go through all of them, or do we want to stop? Go ahead. One at a time.
Okay. Where is it going on the Fairfield Woods Public Library site?
The most, the best place to put it is on the, along the south driveway, basically where the tennis court is. That's the, that's the best location as far as connecting it to the, to the electrical panel.
What's the, like, I see it's $120,000. What's the, like, physical size of it?
The, it could go in the area between the building and the driveway there. There's probably a 12-foot shoulder, and the physical size of it is maybe about a third of the size of this table here. About the size of a dining room table. Height-wise, it's maybe about three feet.
Okay. Have we run this by the library board and the friends of the library, and their, and support of the location and the place?
No, I've spoken to the library staff. It has not gone before the, I have not been before the library board.
In how many years has we had, we had that server there and the sump pump, and not gone about addressing this with a full-time generator? Like, how many years has this been going on?
I've been here three years. That's how it's been since I've been here. The library was originally constructed in, in the late '60s, I believe. There's been some talk that the, the, the construction of the school parking lots and the tennis courts over the years have exacerbated the problems in the basement. But they're, you know, they've, you know, they've existed since, the issue has existed since day one. I think the water conditions might be worse because of the amount of impervious pavement there, and, you know, obviously, the servers weren't there in 1969, but sometime between now and then, it has existed, so. But that's, you know, one of the things we do during a storm is not only have to, you know, prioritize that as a location to go to, but because you literally have a generator running. Yes. On the site there, you have to babysit it.
Right, you have to pay somebody to show up to overtime in a storm. Correct. Who could be doing lifesaving, or.
And even if we're on duty, you have to literally, you know, gas it up every two hours and make sure it disappears, and things like that.
Does the Fairfield Woods have a generator?
The main library?
Yeah.
No, it does not.
No, 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 no. The school, middle school.
The school?
Is there a possibility of tying into that generator?
No.
Is it the location, or?
If we're going to, Sal, if you're going to respond, you're going to do it from the podium, please?
I'm sorry, the generator we have is limited for life safety functions. It primarily runs the fire pump from the sprinkler system in the building and some other emergency systems. Tying it in to another building would be difficult and probably improbable under building codes, because there's separate electrical services, and just the rounding of tied-in two different electrical systems would be problematic engineering-wise.
Okay.
One of the things we've learned, unfortunately, through the storms, is that having a generator is not enough. The question becomes what services does the generator provide?
Right.
We found that out when we had the Ludlow Shelter open during Storm Sandy, and that we have a generator.
Right.
But it only operated certain systems at Ludlow, and specifically, the heat in part of the shelter did not work. So as much as we had light capability, we didn't have heat capability, which is not the best for a shelter in the winter months. So I found that, I not only have to ask, does it have a generator, but also, what does that generator cover and support as part of that? Laurie, any questions?
No, Laurie's just going to follow up. Could Ludlow get fixed with the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do they leave parking, or it's in that grass area?
It's in the island areas.
Okay.
There'd be no restriction on parking.
Joe, could you fill us in a little bit on the Gould Manor dredging?
Sure.
Purpose of that, and what we're accomplishing?
Yes. Brian Carey is also here, working in conjunction with this project, our conservation director. Gould Manor Pond is a pond that was created many years ago, so it's a water course that's created by a dam, so there's approximately a four- or five-foot dam that creates Gould Manor Pond. This has been contemplated many times over the years, and we even got a full permit to do this probably around eight or nine years ago. But what happens to ponds is they deteriorate and fill in overtime. So this pond, pond this size should have a decent-sized depth of, you know, for water quality, approximately six feet. And you also want some areas in spots that are deeper to give a little different temperature and different species. So this, this pond has increased sedimentation over the years, and the nature of it, the stream coming down, and then you have an impoundment that slows down the velocity, the material will settle out. So what this project will do is it'll improve the water quality, improve the ecology, because you're creating better depth. The aesthetics, a lot of times now, you see the, you could see the material pretty close to the surface. Because we have all the material that's been stored there, you don't just get organic, you don't just get sediment stored there, you get organics. So the pond is self-feeding, so it's, so as you get less depth in the pond, you get higher temperatures, you get more organics, which depletes the oxygen. So for the whole overall health of the pond, it is not good to have a pond like this. So one of the things we'll do, in addition to creating depth for equality, we'll get more stormwater storage. One of the issues that this pond overflows, a couple things, is it does affect the baseball fields down below. The drainage goes in back at Quaker, so then we have the worst of both worlds, where we have a pond overflowing, baseball fields in repair, and then have to go chase the damage on private property. So this would involve removing the sediment to proper depths. We design it, we get approvals, once again, from Conservation, and also from the state DEP to accomplish this project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did this come, did we talk about this at RTM last year? I feel like this came up for, was it a grant or something?
This, this project was proposed, was one of the projects proposed at this, at this board, the Board of Selectmen, and it did not get beyond the Board of Selectmen process. I'm pretty sure.
I feel like we heard about it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I know it's based on a number of non-recurring projects coming through.
Yeah.
Last year, we had to prioritize, and this didn't make the cut.
Yeah.
But it's something that, you know, definitely, because I remember back in Storm Irene, we had a flooding issue with this, and.
As much as we lower the water level?
To use it as a, so it fills up with stormwater, if you will.
Right.
If it's not big enough, then the storm is strong enough, then it still overflows. So part of this is to prevent that.
Couple questions. One, is $250,000 enough? Or how much are you going to pull out? Or how much?
Yeah, a couple of variables, and we do think there is enough. There's a bunch of variables involved. A couple things we have to check. We have to do physical testing on the material to see the quality of the sediment there, or the lack of quality of sediment. If there's any type of chemicals there that need special treatment.
That's one of my big concerns, environmental testing.
Yeah. Yeah, and we take soundings, they call them basically, to see, you know, like I said, there's some feet that are, some areas that are foot-deep, two-feet-deep, three-feet-deep, four-feet-deep. You do the soundings all over the whole pond to get a quantity, and then, then as you get further, determines what construction methods you're going to use, whether you do it like a mini mill river where you suck it out, or whether you dewater the pond. So there are a lot of variables involved, and I think it would take a lot of those variables going in the wrong direction to exceed that. So our factor, I think our cost estimate of that is only an eight, so there's approximately a 15% to 20% contingency on it, in case many things go wrong. And the other option, the other thing is the disposal site, whether we could. And the other ops, the other thing is the disposal site, whether we could, you know, broadcast it across this location or bring it to another location in town or ship it out of town. So there are some variables and, once again, this accounts for some of those.
So, and I'll say this, you know, that neighborhood there, and not neighborhood neighbors, like across the street, the Home Depot, the, you know, that's environmentally challenged land. We found that out through the Metro Center and the development we did there. I'm worried, and one, I know that, listen, I've watched the sediment slowly start to build up and also lose more and more square footage of the pond. You know, and it's becoming harder and harder to fish there. And you can actually see, you know, sediment sticking out in many different areas. But, you know, I'm worried and I hope the town is, is prepared for what might be an environmental situation.
Now, the watershed that drains down there, this gives us some level of confidence. You know, the watershed that drains down there is High Street Chud Katona. So it doesn't really go into the, it doesn't go into the black area, block route, turnpike area per se. And there's mostly residential properties that drain into this. And, you know, even 20 years ago, 30 years ago, there, there's, you know, there was never any heavy industrial activities in the upstream watershed.
Yeah, the other sites that we know have been contaminated are on the other side of 95. So 95 is one big barrier. And second, specifically, there were factories there, going back to the '30s, '40s, '50s, that contamination can be traced back to. Specifically, the Metro Center, that was all about what was on that site before and the PCBs and that type of thing that contaminated the ground that we had to remove. This has been primarily residential property going back, oh, I love this quote, "As far as I can remember." Because I used to play in Gould Manor and I used to skate on the pond where it froze over. So it didn't help my hockey playing any, but I did skate there. So I think that that, this costs. But I think because of the construction, you're never quite sure what's in that. So I think your costs are concerned on, there's probably some level of contamination. And until we determine what that contamination is, how much of it is, and then go out to different sites, whether we can store it onsite in town or whether we have to move it offsite. And any of the offsite locations, you typically have to be within, I think it's 30 to 90 days of when you're gonna deposit it there for them to agree to let you go. They don't let you sign up with much lead time at all before doing that. So that, as Joe mentioned, all those things will impact the cost to some degree.
Right. Well, that's why I, I look at the $250,000 number knowing that I could go much higher, potentially. And obviously, I'm sitting here hoping for the best. And we don't know, and I wasn't there and...
Yeah. Once again, we'll, we'll, you know, as we start doing the, the engineering and that's testing material and doing the depth sampling, you know, so we'll, we'll have a better idea, you know, you know, 5% into the project before we spend any significant money, we'd be able to, you know, determine that. But we haven't, you know, it's a, you know, a lot of this work was based on the, when we reviewed the file, we used a lot of the work that was done, you know, seven, eight years ago.
And Joe, let's talk about how the process takes place. We're gonna go out there and we're gonna test. We're gonna test the entire pond and into the surrounding area?
We'll take, you know, whatever the prescribed number of samples is in the sediment itself, we'll take samples there. And that's, you know, so that gives you the quality of sediment.
Then you'll have done your soundings, so you'll have a flavor for the quantity.
Correct.
But we'll do all that, as you said, when we're about 5% in?
Yeah, that's...
So if, if the numbers come back or the tests come back saying, this is not gonna work, or the 250 is not gonna work, or estimates blow that away for some reason?
Yeah.
We'll have a chance to discuss that before we get into the project and come back before this board and see if there's additional funding necessary?
Correct. So, yeah, at that point, you know, if the worst, you know, if they are heavily contaminated and they have to be trucked offsite and they have to be sent to a burn facility and capture the environmental and the cost is $200 a truck and then the cost builds up, you know, we'll know that. That's the first thing.
And that was very much what we went through with the Metro Center, where there's certain soil that we could store onsite and cap, if you will. And you've heard talked about the cap. There was another set of soil that we had to take offsite, and there was a third set that was really contaminated and we had to take that to very special places that would allow us to deposit the dump in there. And those all had different costs associated based on where they were. Any further questions?
Can you go over the dump truck? Yes, six-wheel dump truck. This is a all-season bo, it's a dump truck, so it's a standard, basically the bulk of our fleet is a 38,000 gross vehicle weight, six-wheel dump truck. It's the truck that we have more of. It's the heart and soul of our fleet. This has an all-season body, which means that the body itself has a built-in conveyor system. So you could literally, you know, spread salt on the road like we did this weekend on Saturday and some on Sunday. And then Monday morning, when the salt has run out, you could use it for construction activities to build catch basins or haul snow away or do those type of things. So it's a very versatile truck and that's opposed to the drop-in V-sander. In past years, and I'll explain the wind plow. One of the things in, in meeting with other towns, we don't, we don't have any, any trucks with wind plows. And a wind plow gives you an extra capability to drop down an extra blade when you're plowing. More and more towns are using these, New Canaan, Monroe, in our area, further upstate, there's more and more. We were sort of skeptical, skeptical at first that this would work for our roads. We went to New Canaan, drove around in their truck, talked to their guys. They brought their truck down here a week before Christmas. So it's something that we think will complement our fleet. It'll enable us to push our larger areas of snow by, basically you get two passes for one. That adds probably an extra 15,000 to the price of the truck, but we believe it's well worth it. In past years, there's been a shift, discussion whether, whether to fund vehicles through operating budget money or capital budget money. So how we've evolved, you know, three years ago, there was a substantial purchase of Capital Vehicle 7 in capital non-recurring because we demonstrated that we're way behind or fleet was very aged. After that, the, the rationale between all the boards, Selectmen, Finance, and RTM, was since they were, these, they're, they're, they're capital, but they're not exactly non-recurring because in any given year, we need trucks. We're constantly rotating our fleet. And out of our vehicles, over 100,000, we have 48 such vehicles. So to maintain them, we're always gonna be before this board. Last year, the split was two from the operating budget, two from the capital budget, with the idea that this would be the last year, that there may potentially be a capital budget request for a vehicle. And then after that, they should come out of operating budget since it is a recurring item. So that's sort of the history of how we got here and why there is one request for this year, consistent with some of our discussions from previous years.
So in future years, it's gonna come out of operating?
Yeah, so...
Starting next year?
Yeah, every, let's see, so whether we buy two, three, or four, in theory, it'll all come out of operating.
Basically, a couple of years ago, we asked Joe and his team to put together a long-term plan for vehicle replacement. One of the challenges is that we put vehicle replacement in the operating budget going back. And those things, because they're $200,000 chunks, managed to get cut by various boards. And I think that you can go back and look at, every board did it. So it's not, no one's to blame, but we all took advantage of that. So we basically sat down and said, if we wanna cut down on the bonding, because it's, Joe came up with a plan that said, we need four trucks a year to keep our fleet current. So we gotta jumpstart on that with, as Joe mentioned, seven trucks a few years ago. We're now looking at doing four trucks a year. We've basically gone from three trucks in non-recurring and one truck in the operating budget to two and two. This is one and three. Next year, it'll be zero and four. And from that point on, we'll have four trucks in the operating budget. The only thing that would throw us off track is if one of the boards goes back and cuts the trucks from that point. But we had asked for a long-term plan. Joe and his team put that together. We were, at the time, well behind in our replacement of trucks and, I think it was over 50% of the fleet has passed its useful life.
Correct.
So this keeps us on track, replacing that. Obviously, not all at once, but over time and gives us something that we can manage to from this point on going forward.
Good job with the storm last weekend.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for Joe, or can we move on to, actually, move on to Sherman? Do you wanna sell us in a little bit on that?
Sure. And I'll just, the map of, just, just to remind everybody or tell you, one of the arrangements we have with our schools, because we're space-challenged in town, one of the things we've done for years is our park and rec department operates athletic fields behind just about all of our schools. So at Hollen Hill School, the soccer field there is maintained by Public Works, basically so that the park rec programs could play there, similarly to North Stratfield and McKinley, et cetera. One of the issues we have with a lot of these fields is that they were originally envisioned as just school playgrounds. There was nothing very formal about these fields. As we get higher and bigger and better uses in these fields, there's a different level of demand. So at Sherman School, there is a softball field, which is used for girl softball, adult men's, I believe, and definitely adult co-ed, which has a clay, clay skinnin' field, they call it. There's also soccer fields which run along there, which generally, they use the floor in parallel there. Sometimes the field could also be configured to have a, a larger-type field the other way. But typically, this is for rec program. It's typically used for the younger ages, grade five, four, three, two. So one of the things that this field, once again, it's, it was never designed as a athletic field, almost just as extra in the school, has never been reconstructed, so to speak, in Jerry Lombardo's years here or Scott Bartlett's years here. So one of the things we'd like to do is, is formalize this field. And that would entail redoing the clay-in field, extending the backstop to have some fencing behind there to provide some protection, not formal dugouts, but just protection in front of the benches there, and install a irrigation system and improve the drainage system on the field there. One of the things that we, our non-irrigated fields, one of the things that we're, that we do more than we should, is re-sod them. The fields get a tremendous amount of play, so oftentimes, and I was surprised when we, when I came here, how many fields that we had to re-sod. So even like the one behind Independence Hall, because there's no irrigation there and it gets a lot of play and a lot of play, the, the, the middles of the field literally die. So you have to rejuvenate them through water, and that doesn't happen. So what happens here, it's a yearly event where we have to re-sod the field. There's no irrigation there. We have to pipe in water. We call them the water cannons there. So this, this, investing $100,000 into this field will bring it up to a different level that we feel it deserves for our athletic programs. We did, and we did, both Jerry Lombardo and myself, did bring this before the Park and Rec Commission last week, in addition to the Gould Manor Pond project. And they were supportive of both these projects as far as improvements to their parks.
Thank you.
I fully support that. I think it's one of the most-used fields in town. I go there for men's softball and kids' soccer, and I know that the school uses it for recess and stuff like that. I've often commented myself, I think it's in dire need of at least $100,000, so.
And just from a programming point of view, one thing we are not looking to do is, is increase the usage of it there. It gets plenty of use, but we're not looking to expand the amount of activities there or the amount of games there. It gets enough. This is to maintain the existing level of service.
So we would actually save some money on maintenance, yearly maintenance, with not having to go back and re-sod and...
Correct, so, yes.
Bring in water and all that stuff.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things, it's, one of our November fire drills is as soon as the league stopped playing, we're out there re-sodding them. And the ones we re-sod are typically these and, you know, if...
And the sod doesn't last without water either.
Correct, yeah. And if you're a soccer parent, you know, but the, the gut of the field is the ones that invariably dies without a...
Right.
Joe, thank you. Hey, is Jerry here? Give us an update on golf course renovation? Or, Peter, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Just to add, if I may, just one thing to Joe's thing about the field. We've also been improving our turf management of all of our fields. And with the management program that we've been putting in place, with the irrigation, it's only gonna enhance it between all the play of the school and us. So it will end up being a much better facility. I'll turn my other hat on for golf. This is a $100,000 request in continuation of our 10-year program, Master Plan Improvement Program. We're in our, this would be our seventh-year request. And it's, we have a couple bunkers left to do, improvement of a couple of tees, the second hole, make it wider and move some, move some of that rock. Right now, it's a, it's a par four, but it's a, an iron. Most people hit an iron off of it. It's very small. So we expect to push it a little bit to the right, knocking some of that ledge out and making it wider so that we have more teeing area. The 14th tee will be expanded and some drainage improvements. This has been an ongoing program, as I stated, and because of the funding that you people have been giving us, I'll inform you again, as you all know, but we were given the best course in the state of Connecticut by the CSJA.
Congratulations.
So I think the, well, it's because of the funding that we get. So I hope we can continue to do it.
And Jerry, this is your seventh of a 10-year plan?
Correct.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Nothing good.
Jerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, cluster replacement for the town. There's somebody here to address that. And Dan, if you'd just introduce yourself.
I'm Daniel Siglin Pagli. I'm the Systems Administrator for the town. This proposal basically to, for hardware replacement for the town. We have aging systems that are actually running the majority of our infrastructure. They are large network attached storage. You can think of them as a very big disk drive. It runs our virtual systems, which basically maintains all of our systems. Public safety, all the business systems that we use here in town are all run on this. The three units that are in town, here in Town Hall, one at Public, one at the Police Department, and one in the library. The library is actually a backup unit and it's our disaster recovery location. Discussing about the, the generator. They've all passed their useful lifetime. Replacement schedule on these should be about five years. Unfortunately, we have been running them up to seven years at this point. We have received an end-of-life notice for support from the actual manufacturer on these, which is critical. Q3 in 2017, they will no longer support the products at all. That means no hardware and no break fix for us, which if we have to source these out on a third-party basis, is going to be very, very difficult. Time-consuming and probably cause critical outages. So for that particular reason, we're, we're asking for 125,000 to start a replacement cycle, to do one a year for the next three years. We have actually gone out and gotten some quotes on these, and I found that 125,000 is sufficient for most of the clusters. The library from one vendor, our current vendor, EMC, actually is a little bit more expensive than that. But I have a feeling that we can achieve the same amount of performance from another vendor, if that's what you choose to do. If you wanna stay with the same vendor, we're gonna actually have to up this total slightly. The reason we would look to replace the library cluster first is because it is the backup site. You don't wanna take your critical systems down without actually having the ability to actually recover them if there was an issue. And for that reason, we'd really like to proceed with this project.
Is there a current vendor?
Our current vendor is EMC.
Did you send this out to bid?
Did not send it out to bid. Just got basically quotes for funding and to figure out where we are as far as the dollars come.
Is the plan to go out to bid after this?
Yes. I did speak to purchasing, the amount that we're looking here, I have three or four vendors we're gonna send out, request a bid. I wanna see where the dollars come back. Based upon the quotes that we were given, I feel 125,000... Based upon the quotes that we were given, I feel $125,000 will definitely get us off on the right foot.
Are there any questions?
No, I think I'm ready.
Okay, any further? Dan, thank you. And just confirm, it will be the Fairfield Woods Library Cluster that's first?
Fairfield Woods Library Cluster would go first. That is our, that is our technology plan, that's the basis of what we need to do.
Thank you. Next up, the Pumper E5. Chief, do you take us through that a bit?
Good evening, Dennis McCarthy, Fire Chief. What you have before you is a request for $900,000 to replace the pumper that is stationed at, or assigned to Station 5 on Congress Street. The vehicle is 12 years old, this replacement is consistent with the 2014 Vehicle Replacement Program. It has been in the replacement plan since that time. Particular note, the vehicle that is currently housed at Station 5 has been taken out of service due to significant corrosion in the support beams. The, we're finding that the corrosion that has been, we expect, or suspect is created by the road treatments having a significant impact on all of our fleet. And it's a project that we're currently undertaking to evaluate how best to protect the investment that the town makes in its fire apparatus. We're seeing different corrosion than we have historically. So this request is urgent, in that we are, do not have that vehicle in service right now, it's taken out of service. We have a reserve up there, so it eats into our capacity to put additional vehicles on the road. The other point of interest is the ladder truck that is being replaced, we expect delivery of the replacement vehicle for our Truck 1. That vehicle has come out of service due to the cost of repairs. Typically, with all of our rolling stock, we keep them in service anywhere from 10 to 16 years, and then they serve as a reserve. So Engine 5, that this project is replacing, is no longer in service without a significant investment. The ladder truck, which we expected to be in reserve status for five to 10 years, is out of service, and I know that we won't spend $100,000 that it'll take to rehabilitate that vehicle for any additional service life. So we're in a, a bind right now, where two vehicles, two frontline vehicles that are, were expected to come out of service, will not see any reserve status. There is a change in scope for this project as, from what it appeared in the replacement schedule. Replacement schedule showed it as a pumper. We are proposing to replace it with a Quint in anticipation, or because of our need for a second aerial device. The town does not have, with the loss of Truck 1 as a reserve, does not have a reserve status truck. We are able to provide a pumper with a ladder on it. This is a concept that's been used in Milford, Stratford, and Nowak in the immediate area, but certainly a very popular approach around the country. It will allow us to meet our laddering needs for rescue and for access to upper stories and roofs, as well as provide pumper operations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
So this is, is this going to replace two trucks, and is that what I'm hearing?
No, this will replace one vehicle, but it will have dual function. It will operate as a pumper. Our primary intent is to operate this as a pumper. The Fire Department operates five pumpers and two trucks, and this vehicle will operate as a pumper, but will have the elevated device, the aerial device, for rescue and access to roofs, ventilation, and that type of work.
So next year will we, will we be replacing a ladder truck?
No, next year will, in the capital forecast, will be, in this replacement plan, it shows a replacement in, not next year, the year after, of another pumper, currently the vehicle assigned to Station 3.
So the ladder truck, which is out of service, or which is expired, what you just explained, is, is not in any of the houses now, or not being used?
So it's being used because we need it for its equipment capacity, equipment carrying capacity, but the aerial device has been decommissioned. So when you see the vehicle at the Reef Road Firehouse, it is the Truck 1, with an aerial device ladder on it, but we have red-tagged the ladder, so it will not be used.
When do we replace that ladder truck?
So that ladder truck is the vehicle that's currently under construction, the replacement for that is when we deliver. And Truck 2, which is at Jennings Road, will be replaced 2021.
One of the issues is that we've got a long-range plan from the Fire Department in terms of the vehicle replacement schedule. The trucks, for the most part, I'm going to call them custom, built on this and designed, so that they take several years to go through that process. So we had gotten behind at one point, the long-range plan is here to keep us on track. So part of our catch-up was we ordered one vehicle last year, ordering another vehicle this year. Normally, it won't be every year, but it is at this point, just to kind of get us over the hump, because we were behind, so we're catching up with it.
No, and I appreciate that, and last year, we got similar to this, so I'm assuming the town has prepared themselves, knowing that this was coming down the line, to handle this.
And the vehicle that we, if it gets approved, we will not see it on the streets in Fairfield until probably July of '17, because it will take an entire year to construct.
Do you go out to bid on that?
Yes, yes, and there are some challenges with bidding a custom vehicle, and the real challenge is the height limitations that we have for the railroad crossings, that we need to design the vehicle specific to that, to get everything we want on a vehicle and meet that height limitation that reduces the number of vendors that are capable of producing that vehicle.
Chief, thank you. All right, I think that's it for all of our non-recurring for the town and Board of Ed. Just to make sure we give the public opportunity, any public comment on either the town non-recurring or the Board of Ed non-recurring? Mr. Quinn.
Tom Quinn, 88 Myron Street, Fairfield. Fairfield Woods Library is my main library for my family, my daughter-in-law works there, as you all know. And I know we have to replace the generator and the backup systems, but while we're doing that, I think we really need to look at the, the roof and the leaks, because we're getting a lot of water every time it rains in that library. So I recommend strongly that we look at the leaking in the roof.
Yeah, I think we just replaced the roof a couple of years ago, but we will follow upon that directly to see where the leaks are. Tom, thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right, then, what I'd suggest is that we go back to our original motions, keep our score sheet with us. If we look on our score sheet, we can see for item 5, five-year bonds, you can see the, it's just one item that's included in that. That item had been moved before, so any further discussion on that item, which is the cluster replacement for the town IT department?
No.
Are we ready to vote on that one?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's item 5, passes unanimously. Next is item 6. And let me read this, is to here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled Resolution Appropriating $1,582,677 for the cost of certain non-recurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. If you look on your scorecard, under the 15-year column, there's one item, the six-wheel dump truck for the town, the security infrastructure camera system for the Board of Ed, and together, those two items total to $1.5 million and change. Any questions or discussions from the board?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item up, item 7, to here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled Resolution Appropriating $3,288,015 for the cost of certain non-recurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. That is the third column, you can see it under 30 years. That includes the Fairfield Woods generator, the Gould Manor Pond dredging, Sherman School renovation, the golf course renovation, and the Pumper E5 on the town side. And then on the Board of Ed side, that's the IT server room project, the Dwight Elementary School project and retaining walls, the two, replacement for the two boilers, security infrastructure for $668,000, and system-wide CAT 6 low voltage and electrical project for $230,000. All of those together come to $3,288,015. Any comments, discussion of...
I just had a quick one, when I was looking at the 20-year number. Can I go back to the fire truck and then the school?
Chief, if you'd come up.
Chief, did you say that the current E5 pumper lasted 12 years?
Yes, well, it's currently, it was purchased in 2004, so it's a 12-year life right now.
So are we, are we essentially buying a 20-year fire truck, or like a 12-year...
So the, the plan that the Department has developed keeps the apparatus in frontline service for 12 years. At that 12th year, we seek funding for its replacement, which really makes it 14 years by the time that the replacement is in service, and then we keep the vehicle based on the number of hours and miles and its overall condition, anywhere for up to another 12 years beyond that.
So the, the E5 pumper we're replacing, are we not planning on keeping that, or...
It's too early to, the pumper that just came out of service, it's too early to tell. We are going back, actually, the manufacturer, we've requested the manufacturer come out, do a site inspection, and provide some consultation on how to replace the frame rails, if the frame rails. These are the two rails that run down that support the entire structure of the vehicle, and the significant corrosion where the springs attach to those frame rails. It's an area that can't be beefed up, it can't be modified, it, apparently, the only solution would be to replace them. Until we get a number of what that will cost, I can't say to you whether it would be appropriate to recommend that or not. That would require another appropriation to keep that vehicle in service with necessary repairs.
Do you envision us paying for a bonding on a fire truck, which we no longer have in service with this new fire truck?
I'm not sure I understand that.
All right, so if the fire truck lasts 15 years and we have to take it out of service, we're still bonding for the remaining five years for a truck we no longer have. Do you envision that happening?
You know, the, the challenge that we have is, the corrosion is a new, a new issue for us. This is a phenomenon that, that is not limited to the fire service, a lot of the, over the road vehicles are having the same, same issues. One of the most recent discussions we've had on how to deal with this is to create some undercarriage wash system, and certainly would want to do that in partnership with Department of Public Works, who I would imagine would be having the same challenges. And how do we get the greatest lifespan out of rolling stock? Because it is our intent to keep them for 25 years. The corrosion is creating a new dynamic for us that I can't predict.
All right, Jerry, and I was just looking at it from, the Public Works dump truck we're bonding at 15 years, and the fire truck, two vehicles, we're bonding at 20, and I understand that, I think the Public Works truck's definitely going to have more use and, and, well, I mean, they both get used a lot, so one's at 15, one's at 20, they're both vehicles.
To answer your question, it is our intent, and it has been our philosophy, to keep vehicles for 25 years. And our challenge now is to find maintenance systems for this new phenomenon in order to get that life out of the vehicle.
Okay, I think, to clarify, two things. One, our history has been that the fire vehicles have lasted well beyond 15 years, and part of the problem is we have too many vehicles well beyond 15 years in our fleet, so we've been getting that life. Second, the current plan is to keep them as frontline vehicles for 15, then move them to a reserve status where they're not getting the same usage, so that extends their life beyond that. So that's part of what has been taking place in that, that's part of what the plan is. As Chief mentioned, the corrosion is something we have to take a look at, because that can have a significant impact, and may change our approach going forward if we can't find a solution.
No, I hear what you're saying. This particular case, we're replacing a truck which lasted for 12 years, and we don't know whether we can save it or not, it's that bad. So if this were the case, we would be looking, if we couldn't save it, we'd be looking at eight years of bonding, for the truck we're talking about replacing right now. So I understand the intent, and sometimes intent and reality hit, and that's, that's a concern I have.
And once they've been able to evaluate that, we'll kind of know where we are.
Yeah, no, and I do intend, I do intend on supporting this, I'm sorry. Okay.
Once the chief has evaluated that, we'll know where we are, if we need to change our guidelines, we certainly will.
And the way that we make this happen is the inspection and refurb of critical components could cause, that could cause the failure of the vehicle before we get the full 25 years out of them. That will be part of a new maintenance plan that will address this specific problem. I don't expect that we will ever get surprised by this amount of corrosion in the future.
That was going to be my next question. Do we have other fire trucks on the road which are going to be facing this in the next four years, which their lifespan looks to be less than...
We are, we're currently with a very fine-tooth comb evaluating all of the major equipment to determine, is there corrosion, can it be stopped, and further corrosion be prevented?
Thank you, Chief. You had another question?
No, it was that number one.
Besides the chief, was there another...
Oh, for, yeah, for the school, on the central office IT service renovation project?
Would somebody here to help us with that?
Depends on the question.
Is this also a 20-year project? I mean, the...
20-year...
20-year bond, the way we have the upgrades going and technology moving?
Yeah, because this is for the air conditioning as opposed to the technology itself.
Yes, the Liebert unit is a longer-lasting item, the fire suppression system also should be around 15 years, but with proper PM in service, we can get more than that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Jen, did we already go to the public on the non-recurring items?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so now it's back to us, are we ready to vote? Any amendments we want to make to this before the vote?
No.
So what's before us is item 5. All right, we voted on item 5 and item 6, that was item 7 here. All right, so what's before us is item 7. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And thank you to all the presenters. Next up, item number 8. To, from the Superintendent of Schools, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the superintendent. Resolve that the town of Fairfield establish the Holland Hill School Building Committee to authorize the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project, and three, authorize the Board of Education to file an application for a school building grant. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
All right, and just to be clear, this is a motion that we pass for each of the school building projects, these three items are required by the state before we go for reimbursement. There are other items we do to set up the building committee and everything else, these items then go to the Board of, to the RTM, and are passed by the RTM at that time. Any questions from the board?
No.
Any comment from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item up, to here, consider and approve a charge for the Holland Hill Building Committee. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and that item should be in your packet. Didn't either.
I didn't see it, I haven't read it yet. It wasn't in the stuff we got beforehand either.
Oh, I have it here. Jen, could you make copies of that? So we all have those, and also, ah, here we are. It's stuck to this one, behind that. Should be right behind that. I have them. Lori, do you have it?
Got it.
So the draft of the charge is now before us. We typically do borrow this format from other building school projects and kind of use those as a template and focuses a little bit more on the Holland Hill project. Any comments on the charge?
I have a comment. Question. All these which related to Holland Hill, it requires RTM approval except for the Holland Hill Building Committee charge. Does the RTM get an opportunity to review the charge?
It's, to review it, yes. We send it along with a packet for Holland Hill, but the charge is something that's given by the Board of Selectment for the building. You'll notice it doesn't go to the Board of Finance either.
Was it reviewed by the Board of Education?
The Board of Education, no. We certainly did circulate it to the superintendent and his staff as part of it. And again, this is similar to other charges we've used along the line. We don't reinvent them each time. If you want a moment to review that?
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
Okay to go to the public?
You can go to the public while I read it.
Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay to go to the public? It comes back to us.
No, I know.
Or after. Any comments from the public on the charge? Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Tector, could you?
If you would.
Well, I was just going to ask you, could you read the charge? Most of us in the audience don't have a question.
I guess that would make sense.
Jen, do you want to, could you make copies of this?
Sure.
This would be simpler than reading it and probably more accurate.
Does, I guess I would make this question to Dr. Title.
Actually, you probably make it, well, based on the question, you need to make it here or to Dr. Title.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. You ask the question, we'll tell you who to ask.
Who, is the building committee responsible for reviewing the bids which come in? How does the building committee go about choosing the appropriate design, architectural, structural? Does that go out to bid?
Yes, and not here, but in another life, I've served on three of these, so more versed than one would think on this. So the building committee goes through a bid process for all the design professionals, the construction manager, and so forth that are listed, owner's rep and so forth. And that's guided by the town's purchasing department. So typically, Twig Holland, when she was here, was assigned to staff to the building committee and would guide the building committee to make sure that the building committee's procurement of those professionals met the guidelines of the town's board of finance. So they don't do it alone. They do go out to bid, but they need to follow a process that the town lays out. And the building committee gets to make the choice of which professionals, when all is said and done.
One of the differences on school projects is that for professional services like the architect, because of the school reimbursement, state reimbursement requirements, we're required to go out to bid on that. We got a town project, because it's a professional service, we would not be required to go out to bid. We could, we just wouldn't be required to.
They go out to bid, they're not required necessarily to take the lowest-priced bidder. That was in the legislation for a brief couple of years and was removed by the legislature when it caused all kinds of problems. So, yes, there has to be a public bidding, you know, and vetting and so forth, but it's not necessarily the price is the determining factor.
Right. My concern was that it wasn't the design engineer and that wasn't being appointed to the building committee. I want to make sure that the building committee has an opportunity to vet, look what they're comfortable with looking for, and find someone who can work with the building committee and...
Yes, that would be completely within the purview of the building committee. Shall I stay or shall I go?
Do we usually put timelines in building committees and dates and stuff like that?
At this point, not.
I mean, in the charge?
No.
The charge.
Technically, there's not a design yet.
Okay.
So in order to map that out before we know there's a design, it would be difficult to do. There are overall, if you look for overall dates or guidelines in the Board of Ed Long Range Plan, they'll talk about when things get started, when they get approved.
Well, we went through that in December.
That's what I was going to say, if there's a timeline.
Right.
Well, that's a more specific timeline than we typically have with a building project. So that's particularly...
So when something, this is adopted, can it be changed or amended?
The charge?
Going forward, yeah.
By the Board of Selectment.
Okay. All right. I apologize to viewers at home, this is the first I'm reading of this, and I've never approved a building committee charge before, so I'm happy to hear that we can adopt it as needed if the situation presents itself. So based on that, I think I'm ready.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay, as long as we can find something later.
Yeah, the charges are typically generic enough to give the building committees room to navigate and get the job done. The ed specs are things that can only be modified by the Board of Ed and are not approved by this body or approved by any other body. So that there's some flexibility, but we basically need to give the building committee a charge in terms of what our expectations are. The ed spec is the other defining document, if you will, as I said before.
I have one other question, one other thing.
Go right ahead.
Well, the town facilities commission, does that have any play, any part in any of this?
No.
So what buildings do they oversee?
They don't.
So what's their job?
To basically provide us advice and consultation on projects where we ask. Typically, and one of our guidelines, one of the guidelines in the past, we have assigned one member of the town facilities commission. It's not a requirement, though it is our custom to assign one member of the town facilities commission to a building project. So we have a built-in liaison, if you will.
Well, it seems like it would make some continuity if we had a, like a strong facilities commission and they were part of these other boards, or other committees, rather.
Well, in essence, we have a member from them on, so you could look at that as building up that bond or relationship.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know that much about, I was looking into it, I was trying to understand it, and I hadn't seen this before, so I was just wondering how it, what the differentiations between school projects and town projects.
Any comments from the public on the charge for Holland Hill?
Judy Ewing. Just one technical thing in one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, the report of 2007, the name of that report is the Temporary Building Construction Study Committee, and you can find it online under building committees, but I thought the name should be actually what it is, Temporary Building Construction Study Committee.
Okay, thank you. Jen, can you copy that down for Bill? I'll be happy to make a motion to amend this to include the correct title of the committee on the line as per Ms. Ewing's comments.
I'll second it.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to approve the charge?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, item number 10, Holland Hill Building Committee Appointments. "To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Holland Hill Building Committee. Harry Ackley, Republican, 25 Wagon Hill Road. Tom Nebraska, Democrat, 131 Fairfield Place. Phil Dwyer, Democrat, 2607 Congress Street. Jason Lee, Republican, 245 Sunny Ridge Avenue. Giuseppe Michelangelo, Unaffiliated, 196 Figler Avenue." Just to confirm, that's Joe Michelangelo?
Thank you.
And Tom Quinn, Democrat, 88 Meyer Street. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Any comments from the board?
Yes. When the agenda became public yesterday, I received several telephone calls that it appeared to be a conflict of interest for Phil Dwyer to serve on this board as an elected member. And I was sent a statute number which appears to preclude him. I was wondering if I could get an opinion from the town whether that's accurate or not.
Certainly.
So could we approve the building committee and then next week at the meeting add back the chairman of the Board of Education?
Yes.
If it's appropriate.
Right. Yeah. We did check with the town attorney, I do believe it is, but it, to address your concern, it certainly makes sense to check again.
Okay.
Happy to confirm that.
Okay, and I'm happy to submit this statute as reference.
If you could, why don't you hand that to Jen?
Three point away.
Any further comments?
Can I also ask whether it's, is it appropriate to have town staff on this committee, paid staff? Because I know we talked about it as part of Dr. Title's plan to move things along faster. I just want to make sure, and that's something I think I agree with, I'm a little hesitant on it, but I want to make sure there's no conflict of interest whatsoever through the state Board of Education and their processing in case there's any sort of hiccup with funding, whether that's embedded through the state.
Okay, then I'm going to have to turn to Dr. Title just to confirm that.
State really has no limits on what, who can be on a building committee. It's really completely up to the town and the town charter and the town rules. State could, you want to appoint people to it who weren't even Fairfield residents, you could, you could do it. So state really just says you've got to have a building committee, but they really have no guidance on exactly who really is guided by the individual towns.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Title. Seth?
Yeah, that works for me. So to be clear, I would like to hold back on Chairman Dwyer until I get, we get an official legal opinion.
I think we just agreed.
All right, for next month and everybody else's, okay.
Lori, any comments or questions?
Just, I guess I'm just wondering, so we, going forward, we will be appointing some other people to this committee?
Yeah, because we have a very strict September 1st deadline, and part of this is, for lack of a better term, a quick start program. One of the reasons for looking at these people is they have the ability to meet during the day in case we need to meet with architects or other professional staff to keep things moving. So we're not falling into the once-a-month building committee paradigm. So we get started much quicker and moving faster. From that standpoint, the, at least my thought was that, once we get the project off the ground and are sure that we're in position to meet the September 1st deadline for the temporary portable, or temporary classroom, I don't know if I'm going to call it portable, but temporary classroom, then the idea would be for the larger project to look at bringing on other people. Because there have been a number of folks that have demonstrated interest, and I think it would be appropriate to bring them on. And at that point, we may even have some of these people drop off at some point.
Right.
If they choose to do that. So the issue is, this is a different approach. We have not done this before.
Right.
But as Dr. Title presented to us in December, we were trying to follow his guideline in terms of some of the steps we can do to move this project quicker because of that September 1st deadline, which is very tight even as we speak.
Can I ask Dr. Title a question? When do you anticipate the first building committee convening? When would you like that to happen?
They really can, they can really start to meet whenever they choose, once they're approved by the RTM. This has to go to the RTM.
Right.
So...
And then, just to follow on, typically what we do is we'll set up an orientation session with, to let them know what the resources are here. Also, to have Eileen Cannelli review the FLOI and Robert's Rules with them, so they're familiar with those. We should then have purchasing review or purchasing guidelines, so they're familiar with those. We should have finance, separate from finance. One of the good things about this group is that that review should be fairly quick. We have Tom Quinn, who's just off of the Riverfield project, Harry Ackley, who's just off the Riverfield project, Tom Nebraska, Office of Service here in town, Jason Lee, I don't know if Mr. Lee's worked on other billing committees, but he certainly is off the RTM and is familiar with the process somewhat there, and Joe Michelangelo, who's very familiar with what we do from this side. So the idea is to help this get a quick start. Mr. Quinn did a great job in chairing Riverfield, and we're trying to also get the advantage of the experience he garnered and Harry Ackley garnered on Riverfield, so we can bring that home to this project. And then, so that's part of our overall game plan with that. So we can certainly phase in more people over time. The idea was not to limit this to the entire project, but just to get it off the ground fast. And then the orientation would take place as soon as we can coordinate getting the building committee together. So once they're chosen by the RTM, they get sworn in, we do the orientation, then they're off and running on their own schedule.
All right. And when's the next RTM meeting?
Twenty-nine.
The 29th.
Right, thank you. I see.
Been a long time since you're on the RTM.
I know. I went Monday night, though.
Any further questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I guess, well, I appreciate Mr. Quinn, Mr. Ackley stepping forward, just coming off of building committees, and I do see where that brings value and can help to move the process along. But looking at everybody's resumes and everything, too, really like, we don't have a lot of strong, like, architectural background, engineering background, so I think those are pieces that we should look to probably add into the committee sooner rather than later.
That sounds reasonable. We have not gone out and issued an open call yet, which would be one of the next steps we do.
Yeah, I just think we want to make sure that we're, you know, do everything we can to be responsible with it and, you know, I think bringing in people who are really familiar with the process is part of it, but bringing in people who are more knowledgeable in the building areas would be another advantage.
Yeah, I doubt if we've had anybody's experience as Joe Michelangelo.
Well, I know he has, but I'm just saying that it's kind of...
No, I think your point's well taken, and I think that would be the objective when we bring on more people. That sounds very reasonable.
We're ready to vote.
Well, let's, I think we need to, may I ask for an amendment? We asked to remove Phil Dwyer's name from this list. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
A second.
All right, I think we talked about this a bit already, so I don't think we need to, all right? Are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, second, now the motion is amended as before us. Are we ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Can we go to the... Can we go to the public?
No.
All right. Any comments from the public? Mr. Quinn?
Tom Quinn, 88 Meyer Street, and currently is still the chairman of Riverfield School Building Committee. I think the new process that she's trying there will help get the project off the ground. It's up front where we suffered the most time delays, okay? When I took over, first of all, none of us knew the processes on the committee, okay? So, it was all brand-new, okay? And we got here and there, tried to find out what to do next. And I think now, because you've got some experience coming in, myself and Harry, and also the town itself, having gone through the Riverfield project, I think is better equipped now to work on having another school revised, because they were also not prepared for this. So, I think, you know, this is a good, good start. And, you know, and I think keeping it small to begin with, although we may not have engineers on it or whatever, you know, will help the process. And this is a process. It's not the knowledge of the committee per se, it's the process, okay? And if we do it right, we'll have a very good school. Not as good as Riverfield, but...
You've got a new audience here. Mr. Gallagher?
They'll be voting you off the committee.
I'm Jim Gallagher from Congress Street here in Fairfield. I've been a resident of Fairfield for about 48 years. I've been on school building committees, I was on the Town Facilities Commission, I have a little bit of experience. Number one, I know I'm going to hear the rhetoric, but we haven't had an open call for building committee members yet, but I'm very distressed that this is all men on this building committee. I find it offensive, to be honest with you, that this is all men. I'm surprised nobody else picked up on that. We have a responsibility in the town of Fairfield, and this just isn't right. Number two, Mr. Tetro, I find it incomprehensible that you had an issue with my conflict of interest when I don't work for the Board of Education.
Mr. Gallagher, you're talking about these people on this committee. We're not bringing up any other issues.
What you, sir, had an issue with my conflict of...
You get a chance, Mr. Gallagher, you're out of order.
Oh, I'm not out of order.
Yes, you are. You're out of order. I'm chair of this committee, you're out of order. What we're talking about is these people, this committee. That's what we're talking about.
Mr. Dwyer has just as much of a conflict of interest as I did. I don't, I have nothing to do with the Board of Education. But you found that I had a conflict of interest. It's incomprehensible that Mr. Dwyer, I have a great deal of respect for him, he's a great guy, and God knows he volunteers a great deal of time to our town, but he shouldn't be on the building committee.
Thank you, Mr. ...
And number three, it's clear from these conversations that this building committee is put together so that we can fast-track whatever's going to go on at Holland Hill. I'm 100% in favor of repairing and restructuring Holland Hill and doing the good thing at Holland Hill. I unfortunately live with a lady who's totally disabled because of a fast-track program by the Board of Education. Fast tracks just don't work, and they endanger both our staff and our children, and it shouldn't be done this way.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we're back to the committee members. Any further comments from the board?
No.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. We'll keep you updated. You've got the next appointment for the board. First of all, congratulations. The RTM meeting is at the end of February. Next up, from the Superintendent of Schools, to here consider and adopt a motion entitled, a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Appropriating $1,240,000 for the Costs Associated with the Expansion and Renovation of Holland Hill Elementary School and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." May I have a motion to accept?
Make the motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Title, will you take us through this?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the speed with which this board has taken action on these preliminary steps. We talked about this in December, that there's a lot of procedural hoops to go through, and sometimes getting a building committee in place and the charge and everything can take a long time. So, this is great, because I think we all share the urgency of the situation at Holland Hill. So, and you have a big head start on this, because we went through this in December.
Right.
So, this essentially puts a number to the process that we talked about back in December. Really, there's two elements to this. One is funding, so we can get two temporary classrooms there by September 1st, as the first selectman said. And timing is important on that, because there's a lead time in getting these things in place, and the urgency of the crowding of that school can't wait for this project to finish. So, that's a piece of this. We've done our part in the timeline. We've engaged on Board of Ed expense and architect to do the drawings for those portable classrooms, because we can't wait for the building committee to get going and get the money, and that would cost us another month. It's not particularly a big price tag, but it's part of our deal on this. So, that, this will pay for the installation and acquisition of the temporary classrooms, and then this gets us all the way through, about three-quarters of the way through, design of the project. So, by the time it comes back for full funding, we'll have a very high confidence level of, for the project. So, all the same steps that we follow that every building project goes through, but there's enough funding to, before full funding is requested, so that we have as firm a number as we possibly can have. All the environmental testing that has been done will be through, all the way, pretty much through design development, before we even ask for the remainder. And that's been an issue, that we've been asking for money maybe too soon, based on conceptual design, and then we find things like PCBs and other things happen, and then we have to come back for more, and that's always uncomfortable. So, this number basically operationalizes the process that we discussed in December. So, that's my overview.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I do. Is the number for the portable classrooms a hard number in this budget?
We're pretty confident in that one, because we reached out to some vendors who do this. I think they've given us an estimate, but some of it will depend on what the architect tells us where they need to go.
Right.
And the important thing in that, and one reason we wanted to get on it soon, was that these temporary classrooms will need to be there while construction is going on. So, they need to be put in a proper spot so that we can get the construction done and still have the portables in operation. So, some of it will depend on where they go, but our staff has reached out to vendors, and this is a fairly routine kind of a process here. They're not complicated, and we had just done one at Osborne Hill for the gym, we had the double portable. So, we've got some experience with the costs of these.
Can you give me like a ballpark of like, $400,000 per classroom?
No, 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 no. I think we're looking at, it's on here, $250,000 is the total cost. That's on page 12 of the booklet.
Yeah.
Where we break down the details. There is, you know, obviously some of the contingency could go towards that, but that we think is the outside number, and that includes the, that includes the leasing costs for three years built into that, so that wouldn't be all put up front. There'll be some other costs associated with that that we are, we're carrying in our operating budget, we need to furnish them, we need to put computer hookups in there and so forth, but this will be the, this will be the main cost right there, $250.
And since these prices have sort of been already vetted out, there's low probability of this going over budget?
Correct. I think that's a, I think that's a conservative figure.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Are you discussing the roof as well?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's not before, so just...
So, who's the construction management owner's representative?
Those will be decided by the building committee.
Okay. But is that somebody that works for the construction company, or is that an outside person?
Typically, it's an independent company that comes in, or a person that comes in.
There are a variety of professionals that work on this project. And typically, you go ahead and, you've got an architect, you've got a construction manager, construction company manager, you have a owner's rep who represents your interest in all of this, and a commissioning agent, whose job is to help design and then ultimately test all the mechanical systems equipped in the building. Those are sort of the big four professionals that are hired by a building committee. And then typically, when you hire these firms, the other folks that are listed under there on those dots, those are people that work for either the architect or the construction manager. Typically, the architect hires most of these folks, because they're doing design work. So, they don't have to go through a bid process on every single one of those people that are listed. Typically, the architects will come in and they'll say, you know, I'm from, you know, Joe Smith Architects, and my team on this project would be, you know, Sally is doing the, you know, engineering, and Mary is doing the, you know, all the different pieces to it. And so, the building committee, when they pick an architect, is really picking a team. So, four, basically four clumps of design professionals and construction professionals that the building committee hires. So, these are estimated costs. Our staff asked two different firms to price this out, you know, without commitment, obviously, and they were both in about the same ballpark. So, we're pretty comfortable that when we bid this, the prices will be in this range, if not better.
Any further questions? Okay, if you have a question. Any comments from the public?
Trudy Darrell, Woodcrest Road, Fairfield. I wanted to take the opportunity on behalf of my fellow Holland Hill parents and the children that the PTA represents, but I'm speaking to you as a parent tonight and as somebody that the Board of Education and the principal and Dr. Title can tell you has spent the better part of 18 to 20 months harping on them regarding this project. I have wanted to thank you so much for moving the process quickly. The situation has been rather urgent at Holland Hill. We very much appreciate that the Board of Selectmen has taken a serious look at this and has moved it forward fairly quickly to set a building committee up, to approve the charge, and hopefully now to approve the funding for this first phase. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? Back to the board. Any further discussion?
No.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Next up, item 13. To here consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Superintendent of Schools. Resolve that the town of Fairfield establish the Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Building Committee. Two, authorize preparation of schematic drawings and outline of specific occasions for the project. And three, authorize the Board of Education to file an application for a school building grant. May I get a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. And then, this is very similar to the motion we just approved. Fairfield Woods is a little bit different in terms of approving these next two motions to get Fairfield Woods on track, because item 13, which we'll get to next, needs to get to the Board of Finance before going to the RTM, and this is our last chance to get it to the Board of Finance. We will adopt the building committee and charge for this project, but at our next Board of Selectmen meeting, because those don't need to get approved, or we still get the, even though we did it the next meeting, we still get the building committee approved by the RTM at the end of February. So, we're trying to manage our deadlines in terms of coordinating the meetings. The difficulty of the first week in February is our meeting is actually after the Board of Finance.
Right.
So, this is our last chance to get something to the Board of Finance. So, any comments or questions on the side?
Well, it's the first I saw it today, so, but...
Well, you're just seeing it on the front, and normally you wouldn't see it take that to the RTM. Okay, to the public?
Real quick question. How does this roof compare to the Dwight roof? I think the money we allocated was less for Dwight. Does that, does that hit you right?
If you can answer that from the podium, please.
Sure.
The question is, dollar, the dollar amount?
I guess I would say square footage, difficult...
That's item 13, I think. We're just on the, I don't, 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Hang in there. If we can vote quick.
Sure.
Any comments from the public on item 12? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
So, basically, what we're doing is we're setting up another building committee?
Oh, yes.
Is that what this is?
Yeah. Well, this is just the wording.
Okay.
We'll actually set up the committee and put people on it.
At another time.
Kind of, next meeting. And the goal here, because of the size of this project, would be use the Standing Projects Building Committee, Special Projects Standing Building Committee, so we can get all the S words in the right sequence. That's the group we used to do the Mill Hill roof. It's the group we've used to do part of Sherman's School in the past. So, they're a standing committee, so they don't, we don't have to pick the members, and we don't have to get them approved by the RTM again, because they've already been approved. So, that, that lets projects of a smaller size, in this case, a $3 million project or less, move forward. But we will still officially assign it to the Special Projects Group at the next So, are we ready to vote on item 12?
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item 13, also from the Superintendent, that requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. To here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled, "A Resolution Appropriating $3 Million for the Costs of Replacing the Roof at Fairfield Woods Middle School and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And I believe Mr. Timmy, you had a question?
First, Sal.
The question was about how this compared to Dwight.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the aerial footage, and I'm trying to rack my brain of how much we approved for Dwight. We're obviously now replacing the full roof here.
No, we're replacing approximately 60% of the roof areas. Many of the roofs are new to the construction a couple of years ago. The, you're looking at the aerial photograph on the top of page six, the upper right-hand corner of the building is the new auditorium addition. Lower left-hand corner is the classroom additions, and just above that, you'll see some dark roofs. Those were also the auxiliary gym and the, I'll call it the special learning suite of rooms that were added with the 2012 additions. The rest of the roofs, with the exception of that nice dark roof in the lower right-hand corner, are expired. And the aerial photograph, if we read on the lower-hand side of the page, really illustrates the difficulty we're having with that roof.
But compared to Dwight, in terms of size, square footage?
Square footage, this is probably, this is, I believe it's about two and a half times the size of Dwight.
Two and a half times. That's about two and a half times the cost, right?
Right.
And about two and a half times square.
Okay. I see condensers and stuff on there, air conditioners on the roof, which will be replaced. Are we, maybe I'm not seeing that. The items which are on the roof, are those getting replaced, too?
No.
No.
They would be, depending on the detail of the unit, they would be disconnected, lifted, roofing done, brought back down, reconnected.
Reconnected.
As part of the work, but not, not replaced.
And is there a plan to put solar panels on the roofs?
Yes, there is for the lower classroom addition that was put in in 2012. There was a Z-Rex 1 last year. Name and company escapes me right now, but we're just in dialogue, in the next couple of weeks, I'll start seeing the engineering drawings, and that'll probably be done this summer, more than likely.
Thank you.
And once we do this roof, then it qualifies?
Then we can turn it for another Z-Rex.
Turn it into another one, adding more solar panels.
We actually went into competition for another set of solar panels, another ZREC, and we didn't win that competition, but we'll go in in the next bidding round for ZRECs.
Are you looking to do this this summer?
Yes, that's the idea. That's why the first selectman was happy, I was happy the first selectman got this on the agenda, because of the timing of the Board of Finance meetings are such, that they're about to go into budget. So, when we have, in the past, bid roof projects out in, say, May, and all the contractors all have their work lined up, the price is out of sight. When we've bid them in the winter, we've gotten some very good pricing.
Right.
On all these, the roofs have all come in, knock on wood, under budget, the last three or four that we've done, when we bid them in this timeframe. Well, we had an experience with another project where we tried to bid it close to the summer, and it was way too high, and had to get rebid, and then the price came down.
Right.
So, and the urgency of it, the leaks in the building are really not healthy, it's really not in good shape, and so there is an urgency to do this, this summer. This is a roof that went bad quickly, unfortunately.
Yeah, really.
It did, it did. But it's out of warranty, which means it qualifies for state reimbursement, state is very good about this reimbursement, they don't really nickel-and-dime you on a roof, so we should be getting, you know, our 25%, 26% back on this, without much hassle. We've got, the town's got really good at doing roofs. Not to say, we're in the groove on the roofs. So, confident with this one.
Any further comments from the board? Sorry, did we go to the public here?
No.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments before we vote?
Yep.
Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Can I say something?
Last thing.
Thank you guys so much for all of this. This is a lot to take in, in a short period of time, fast learning curve, and just want to say, from my perspective, we really appreciate it.
All right, I think next up on our agenda is the tax collector, to consider and act upon tax refunds, an amount as recommended by the tax collector. As recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment.
All right.
I make an amendment to remove the period at the end of the sentence and add a comma, followed by $1,508.36, period.
A second?
A second, yep.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All right. The item as amended stands before us, any further discussion on the item?
Nope.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, to here consider and act upon any other business that should probably come before this meeting. None that I know of at this point.
Can I add something?